Welcome. First of all, I have a couple of announcements. Make sure your cellphones are off or on silent. Yep, everybody grab your phone. No campaign literature as material is allowed in the room. Just a reminder or T-shirts. My name is Margie Gator, a member of the League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County, and we'd like to thank the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this forum this evening. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization of both men and women whose purpose is to promote active and informed participation in government. We appreciate the interest and efforts of groups such as the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce in presenting events that increase voters' knowledge about the candidates and the issues. The purpose of the candidate forum is to provide an opportunity for all the candidates to be heard at one time and to be questioned by you, the voters, an audience. We hope that by bringing the candidates and voters together face-to-face, voters will be better informed and will make wise decisions on Election Day. We appreciate your interest in coming out to learn more about the candidates. Tonight you will hear from the candidates for the Brisbane City Council. There are six candidates for three seats. The term of office is four years. In the interest of time and fairness, three years. See, I didn't get the rules. Three years. All right. Go with the audience. What, any other rules you want to make?
The audience knows best.
Yeah. In the interest of time and fairness to the candidates, please hold your applause until the end of the forum. We can thank all the candidates at the end with applause then. This event provides, again, a nonpartisan setting to let voters hear all of the candidates and help you choose. It is not for supporters or opponents of any particular candidate in the audience to demonstrate personal preferences, so please keep any expressions of disdain or delight to yourselves, please. The candidates, in alphabetical order, are Clark Conway, Karen Cunningham, Dana Dilworth, Cliff Lentz, Jamil Munir, and Tony Varios. For this evening, the candidates were all sent a letter with the ground rules, and the rules are as follows. Each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement. Then we'll have a question period, which you're busily writing as we speak. During that period, each candidate will have one minute to answer questions. All candidates will have an equal time to speak to the question. Then we'll have closing statements, which are two minutes each. Our timekeeper will hold up signs when the candidate has one minute and 30 seconds left of the allotted time. At the end of the time, the timekeeper will hold up the stop sign until the candidate quits, stops speaking, and you can finish the end of your sentence, but don't go on for a paragraph, please. We have one usher this evening. Mary, oh, I'm sorry, Marie Valdisari is our timekeeper. We have one usher, Mary Nobriga, and she will be circulating with the cards for the questions. So feel free, if something comes to mind during the proceedings, to just raise your hand, and she'll come with cards and pencils for you. Please write legibly and a little large, over 50. Questions of a personal nature and personal objective will be deemed out of order. All questions come to me, the moderator, and I will sort the questions by subject and try to cover a variety of subjects. We seldom have time to ask all the questions, and I was here two years ago, and I know you all are very active and do ask lots of questions here, so I may not get to all of them, but I'll try to cover all the main topics. And you may not hear your questions specifically, but I'll, because I sometimes rephrase or combine them, but just stay to the topics. Those are the ground rules. We are now ready for opening statements, and our first opening statement will be provided by Cliff Lentz.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for participating in the democratic process. When I moved to Brisbane 28 years ago, I knew that this was going to be the place for me to set down roots. It's been a wonderful town to raise a family, create a business, and to give back to the community that we all love. I've been on the Brisbane City Council now for almost eight years. It's been a great honor, and it's been extremely satisfying and enjoyable to work with you to put forth things that have made our town better. Some of the things that we've worked on have been to have our city be a playful City USA city. We got the $20,000 kaboom grant to help with the playground equipment at the community park. We remodeled the community center. We built the Pocket Park behind the current library. Currently, I was able to help the city garner an $850,000 grant to redo the Crocker Park Trail. And one of the projects that I'm working on right now is to get a grant to build a stairway from San Benito down to Alvarado. Everyone knows that really steep, you know, pathway, and we need to have a safe place for our kids to be able to get to that safe route to school, to the elementary school. You know, during the Great Recession, I was able to work on a team that helped put forth an economic development plan that helped us not only get through the recession, but to also put forth a good strategy for when the recovery occurred. One of the things that I was able to do with my council colleagues, I was able to persuade them to move forward with a priority-based budget, to make sure that the money that you all spend, you know, that you all give in your taxes, that we're doing it in an accountable and transparent way. Four years ago, when we were here for the candidate forum, I mentioned that I think we could build a new library. And a lot of people thought I was just making a campaign promise, just because they didn't think we had enough money, or, you know, the Eagles deal wasn't going to come through. But I was able to put forth an alternative plan and find other sources of money, and, you know, next year we're going to be breaking ground on a new library. Recently, I've been walking the neighborhoods, knocking on doors, and, you know, listening to what people have to say. And of course, the main thing on people's minds is the Baylands. My main priority for the Baylands is to make sure that we maintain local control. You know, there's been a lot of pressure on us from outside to put forth someone else's vision, you know, UPC's vision. I'm not in favor of that. We need to put forth the community's vision for the Baylands, and I'm really looking forward to, you know, answering some of your questions on that topic. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next opening statement is Tony Varios.
Well, I'm happy to hear that some of those comments that Councilman Lentz just made, because they're a little bit different than what we've been hearing for the past couple of years. A vote for Tony Varios is a vote for Brisbane. I won't sell us out, and I'll keep Brisbane first. My qualifications include many leadership roles over 50 years, and none of them elected. This is the first time I hadn't ever planned to run for elected office in Brisbane, and one of my closely respected mentors convinced me to think it over after I declined the first offer. The limitation, imitation, imitation is the sincerest form of flattery, and as you may have read in the most recent issue of the Luminary, I want to thank all of the other candidates here who have included some of the ideas and endorsed some of the ideas that I previously stated on the record. Fight for Brisbane's high quality of life, right, fight for our right to self-determination, improve Brisbane's safety by better streets and sidewalks, show how Brisbane can build truly affordable housing, expand on the timid, shortsighted parkside plan to cover the whole of Crocker Park and stop paying $150,000 to high-cost consultants to produce unimaginative designs. There are things that Brisbane got right. We became a city and grew slowly, still faster than most others. We saved San Bruno Mountain and the Bay from doomsday, annexed Crocker Park, approved development of the Sierra Point and the harbor. And then there's things we, and there's many other things, and there's not enough time for me to read the whole list. There's things that we got wrong. We failed to find a way to annex the quarry. It's still open, still spewing dust. We failed to preserve the Brisbane Bay Shore Roundhouse, its turntable, and at least one complete track to the main line. Brisbane has a safety problem, a traffic safety problem. Unfortunately, we have an excellent homegrown police chief who both understands that problem and is already actively working to stop it. I offer this slogan as a volunteer: Slow down, give us a break, and save lives. On the Baylands, no, it's no on housing. I won't let Brisbane be bullied. Brisbane will do what the majority of our voters have approved, and that's it. The Who wrote a song called "We Won't Be Fooled Again." Please don't be. Take a good look at the record before accepting candidate's statements. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next opening statement is Clark Conway.
My fellow citizens, I was born and raised in Brisbane, and I attended both Brisbane Elementary and Lipton Intermediate Schools. My wife Liz and I are raising our two youngest grandchildren in fifth and seventh grade, and I have a niece in eighth grade, all of them in Brisbane schools. Both of my parents were actively involved in the community, as were my brothers and sisters. My father was elected to the original city council in 1961. My mother was the original soccer mom and was very politically active. I was first elected to the council in 1993. I'd set numerous goals at the time, which most were accomplished in my first two terms. They included better recreation, which was virtually nonexistent, and they included building a swimming pool and restoring the ball fields at both BES and Lipton, and to preserve our open space, which I initiated the formation of Open Space Ecology Committee. To date, close to 50 acres have been preserved as open space for future generations to enjoy. I retired after eight years. Four years later, I was talked into running again in 2005. I was elected and re-elected again in 2009, and re-elected again in 2013. I'm now in my 20th year on the city council. Coming back into office in 2005, we were faced with the Corey Housing Proposal. But in 2001, when I was mayor, I initiated putting this proposal on the ballot and would let the citizens decide on housing or not. This proposal went to the people in 2006, and you soundly defeated it. We're now in the final phase of the development on the Baylands. The final EIR is currently before the council, and we are in deliberations. The Sacramento politicians from San Francisco want to bully us into what they want. All the while, their city has 38,000 vacant units, rentable units. That's almost 16% of their housing stock. This is mostly due to dysfunctional laws that they were unwilling to fix while all three of them were on the Board of Supervisors. Currently, housing on the Baylands is not allowed by our general plan that was approved by the voters. I support your right to vote on the final plan of this project, whatever that may be. The next six months will be the most critical six months in the history of our city as we process the Baylands, with these bullies breathing down our necks. This is where strong and experienced leadership really counts. I pledge to do everything in my power to fight for our right to local determination, self-determination. Our budget is currently balanced. We have close to $10 million in reserves. On this ballot includes a business license tax for ecology, it's called Measure E, and also a business license tax for soils processing, Measure D for dirt. I support both of these measures. You have three votes this November 7th. I humbly ask for one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next opening statement is Karen Cunningham.
Thank you. Thanks to the League of Women Voters, the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce staff, and for all of you for coming out tonight. You know, this is about we. This is not about me. We're all in this together, about getting things done, not about what divides us, but what is in fact, which is in fact quite minimal. My son and I moved to Brisbane in 1994 and bought our first home in 1995. It's been a wonderful experience raising a child here in Brisbane, and now I look forward to raising a grandchild here in Brisbane as well. So that makes me pause even more as to what the future I envisaged for every family in Brisbane, and we have seen a dramatic change in the makeup of our community in the last 10 years or so, with so many young families and children coming to call Brisbane their home too. I've been a volunteer here since 1998 with the Citizens Committee for the Brisbane Swimming Pool, the Citizens Committee for the Dog Park, a member of the, and current chairperson of the SERTS, which was formerly the CEVs. I was on the BB CAG for the first two years, a Lipton and BES volunteer and donor, Brisbane Village Helping Hands, and the G3 Gardeners. And I was also very active, our family was also very active on the no on housing in the quarry back then. Thanks for the year, because I couldn't remember. I'm also a volunteer with the Nine Lives Foundation, and since 2010, we have successfully trap, spayed, and neutered 200 feral cats in Brisbane, so I'm pretty well-involved in the community. I've also been on the Planning Commission first from 2010 to 2015, and again from January of this year. I am an independent thinker. As you all well know, I'm quite okay saying no, but I do listen to everybody. It is my goal, if elected, to get things done in a timely fashion. We have incredible opportunities in Brisbane to invigorate our downtown, create more beautiful spaces, and develop recreational and other business opportunities to benefit our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next opening statement is Jamil Munir.
Good evening, League of Women Voters, Brisbane Chamber of Commerce, and my fellow Brisbaneian. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak before you tonight. I'm seeking your vote on November 17th. On November 7th, in 1997, I moved to the city of Brisbane. I love the serenity and beautiful small-town atmosphere of this city, and I would like to preserve the tranquility of the city's mountains and rich habitat. I have been married to my wife, Hanifa Munir, for the last 34 years. My wife and I are so proud of our two children who have attended college. I have a master's of science degree in mechanical engineering and a master of engineering and civil engineering, which will serve me well in a position on the city council. In addition, I have over 40 years of service in both the government and private sectors. I have worked with federal, state, and local agencies, you name it, in developing and enforcing safety regulations for railroad crossings, light rail systems, heavy rail systems like BART in Los Angeles. I have served on many, many state and federal safety rulemaking and transportation committees, and I've written myself several rules and regulations. I have participated in over 100 environmental reviews and co-authored a number of environmental impact reports. I also hold general building contractor and engineering license. I have served the community as a member of Brisbane Planning Commission for the last 19 years, acting as chairman for nine years. In my capacity as a commissioner, I have dealt with many complex land issues, and I've heard many of the concerns expressed by the members of the Brisbane community. As a member of the city council, I will work with the community to promote these goals: reduce airplane noise, revitalize downtown, expand the park and rec after-school programs, continue high school bus service for families, protect Brisbane from excessive or hazardous development, promote retail development, affordable housing, and senior housing, reduce traffic impacts, build a utility-scale renewable energy farm, lower greenhouses and particular matter pollution, require sustainable building design, fund much-needed capital improvements and unfunded liabilities, improve health and safety. My background in engineering, planning, and addressing environmental issues will be helpful in making the city run more efficiently so that the city works for the people and not the other way around. I will endeavor to negotiate the development agreement for the Baylands that will benefit Brisbane, and I will respect our environmental values by also encouraging business to move into our city. I respectfully ask for your support and vote on Election Day so that I may continue to serve the community, Brisbane. Thank you very much.
And our final opening statement is Dana Dilworth.
Thank you. I wanted to thank the League of Women Voters, the chamber, and the council, and particularly the citizens of Brisbane for making this election possible. This election is happening because of a solid core of citizens who petitioned for your right to vote after the incumbent council voted to extend their terms. That's what I love about Brisbane, the legacy of citizens who step up to the plate to do the right thing, who organize to save this town from grandiose schemes. I love Brisbane. I love the mountain. I came to know her first as a master control technician on Radio Road for KTSF, and then through Jake Zigg and the Native Plant Society and David Schooly's numerous hikes. And if you haven't been hiking on the mountain, you must give that a shot. KTSF relocated operations to Brisbane next door and began to develop foreign language programming, and that was before the Internet, so we were pioneers. In fact, we had to tell the city of Brisbane what regulations were necessary for relays I was here in Crocker Park during Loma Prieta earthquake. I experienced riding the waves of this 50s engineered fill in one of these concrete tilt-up buildings to return home to bedrock in old Brisbane of what appeared to be totally unfazed by the quake. In the 80s, I did some Freedom of Information Act requests with Water, Air, and Toxic Substance Control Board, and found that decisions were being made on the Baylands that even our town wasn't aware of, kind of like what's going on now. I became involved then and remain vigilant in protecting citizens from the dangers of our industrial past. In the 90s, I was involved in the development of the general plan and have since read the multiple plans through every element of the draft environmental impact report. I'm ready to jump in and serve this town. As we move forward, I want to work on the public assets that the council has allowed to go fallow. The teen center recently torn down could have served our after-school and childcare needs. We got a grant for trails in the Crocker Park, yet the sidewalks and connectivity in central Brisbane is challenged. And we once had an active affordable housing program, and let's get these things happening again. You, the Brisbane citizens, are the people of whom I would be proud to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to stop the proceedings for a moment before the question time. We have, the League issued the ground rules to all the candidates, one of which was there is no campaign literature in the room, and that includes apparel. And we have one gentleman wearing candidate apparel. And sir, if you need to either leave the room or turn it inside out would be fine. Would be great. And thank you, candidates. We sure are. And now we can start with the question period. Again, each candidate will have one minute for questions, and for anybody who has questions, don't forget our usher here, Mary, has cards and pencils if you need them. I will vary the order of the candidates in which they are called on to answer the questions. And let's begin. Since it's the hot topic, we'll start with the Baylands. If you had to choose between regional benefit and Brisbane benefit, which would you choose and why? And for this one, we will start off with Tony Varios.
Brisbane. And the reason why is because we live in Brisbane. Brisbane did not create the regional problem. San Francisco and the rest of the region did. They've failed to address it, and now they're trying to jam it down our throats. That's very simple. And I have to commend both Councilman Conway and council member Terry O'Connell and Madison Davis, who stood up for the city, as well as Mayor Liu at a meeting recently where this was discussed. So Brisbane has a right to decide what's good for Brisbane, and that's what the council will do, and that's what the voters will do. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on this question is Clark Conway.
Yeah, can you repeat the question?
Sure. If you had to choose between regional benefit and Brisbane benefit, which would you choose and why?
Well, they kind of go hand-in-hand, but first thing is Brisbane benefits. You know, we've got to take care of our town first, you know? And the way to do that is something I grew up with is good government starts at home, not outward. The further up people move in the government, the further they're removed from the people. The city council, you always have access to your neighbors, whatever, phone you, see in Midtown Market, whatever, you know? But regional benefits are important, but, you know, just like what's happening right now with the state trying to control Brisbane, saying that we're this or we're that, you know? But over the last 20 years, Brisbane's really been a good steward of the environment, good steward in doing housing. We've actually grown over 50%. A lot of people don't give that credit, but that is something that, you know, not very many cities in the state of California can say that, so.
Thank you. And next on this question is Cliff Lentz.
That's an automatic. It's Brisbane first. And the reason that I say that is because Brisbane has a long history of putting forth sustainable vision in regards to development. The Baylands, yes, you know, it's UPC's property, but it's in our city. And so we, you know, UPC and the others out there, the politicians from San Francisco and Sacramento, they've had the stage, and they act as if, you know, we're a bunch of country bumpkins and we can't, you know, put forth a vision, you know, like they're the adults in the room. We need to come together and look at what our values are. We can't take central Brisbane and put it out in the Baylands, but we can take our values in regards to, you know, reducing traffic impacts, environmental impacts, you know, having connectivity not only within our own community, but also with the outside area as well.
Thank you. And next on this question is Jamil Munir.
Thank you very much. It's really no common, it's a common sense that we'll stand for Brisbane, but you have to look at the records as who has a stand-up for the Brisbane values. And it's important that we figure that out. In Planning Commission meetings all along, I was instrumental in figuring out what exactly the developer is up to. And I'm also very much worse with what the state and local agencies can do to bully us, because that's what I did for the last 40 years with the state of California, and I'm ready for that. I will work very hard to make sure that we don't get bullied into that, and we don't forget Brisbane values. Brisbane is number one for me, and I will work for Brisbane. I'm retired, and I have plenty of time to spend and have the knowledge and expertise. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on this question is Dana Dilworth.
I don't see them as being separate, frankly. I think that supporting renewable energy plan will both benefit Brisbane and have a regional impact. It's not the one that, quote-unquote, "the bullies" are asking us to consider, but there are a lot of, there's a lot of potential here for things that benefit Brisbane that, and will benefit others, because we will be attracting people to come and learn about our town, the wonderful things that we put together, and be able to share what works and, you know, proudly give that to the community.
Thank you. And finally, on this question, Karen Cunningham.
Well, obviously, anybody who's representing Brisbane is going to have Brisbane's best interest in mind at all times, but we have not managed this narrative very well. We have allowed outside influences to come in and bully us. We've allowed them to come in and paint these beautiful pictures of what they think we should have. I've had an opportunity to talk to some of our state legislators, and they're quite unaware of the realities of what lies beneath out there. So we need to take control and make sure that all the decisions- So we need to take control and make sure that all the decisions that are being made for Brisbane relative to the Baylands are made with our best interest in mind. But I am not willing to put us in a position to bankrupt our city to that end goal. So, you know, it's not a safe place. It's never been a safe place. And I think if the state regulators knew all of the issues that were out there, they would probably also understand that it could not be safe for housing.
Thank you. We'll stay on Baylands for one more question. How would you deal with the attempts of outsiders, including MTC, ABAG, San Francisco Supervisors and State Legislature, to impose on Brisbane this plan? How would you, specifically, how would you deal with the attempts of outsiders such as the San Francisco Supervisors and State Legislatures to impose this on Brisbane? And for this one, we start with Cliff Lenz.
Okay. You know, I feel that the best defense is a good offense. And so what I think that we need to do is come together as a community, you know, talking about what our values are. I mean, we can put forth a zero-carbon development. We can put forth a development that is energy self-sufficient. We can put forth a smart transportation plan. We can put forth a development where the urban and the natural environment are in harmony with each other. You know, I do know that there's folks out there that don't want housing. Look, I don't want housing either, but I'm also a realist, too, and there's tremendous pressure on us to do housing. So if we're going to have to go down that road, we need to make sure that it's remediated at the highest standards possible, that we do a transit-oriented, transit-oriented development, and that we look to do workforce housing along with the commercial development at the same time as residential, so that we're not stuck paying for those services that housing puts on cities.
Thank you. And next on this question is Tony Varios.
Thank you. Well, you just heard the problem right there in a nutshell. If we're going to go from no to, well, we'll do some, and we'll do, we'll negotiate for some housing, and we'll throw in some workforce housing on top of that, now what you have is you've changed your general plan, and SB 35 is just going to jump down your throat and take over total control of your town. Now, you don't have to believe me. Just talk to the lawyers and the politicians that wrote the law, or read it yourself. But I'm saying no. If you elect me, it's no. And I have plenty of ideas. I saw a few good ideas in Cliff Lenz's 10-page treatise that's on the city website, a few. And I saw a lot of really bad ones that I didn't like. No time to talk about them all here today. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on this question is Clark Conway.
Yeah, thank you. Dealing with San Francisco politicians is, they have an air of arrogance, of course, because they think that they're Rome, and all roads lead to Rome. But they're all kind of tied together. San Francisco, MTC, that's Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and, but our state legislators are really the key, because they're the ones that can change the rules. And they have changed the rules, because you remember redevelopment back in 2011? Governor Brown got all the Democratic legislature on board, and they just wiped out redevelopment. I know Dana mentioned about affordable housing, that we used to have a fund. Well, that's where that funds came from, was 20% set aside of our redevelopment agency areas, got 20% of the tax increment was set aside for affordable housing. And that's all kind of disappeared now. So dealing with our state legislatures is the most important component of this whole thing. San Francisco, we can ignore their blowhard stuff, but it all ties together.
Thank you. And next on this question is Karen Cunningham.
So, the elephant in the room relative to this answer is that the state can change the rules. They can write rules that are specific to Brisbane. They can write bills that are specific to Brisbane. And if they do that, we could lose control. And I'm really afraid that that might be coming down the pipe. So I would like to be able to negotiate our way to safety and fiscal prudence without going broke in the process. I don't know what that looks like, but I'm with Clark. San Francisco has no control over us. They can wah-wah-wah as much as they want, good for them. But we need to be really afraid of the state and what the state can do to us.
Thank you. And next on this topic is Jamil Munir.
Thank you. Working for the state for the last 40 years, I've come across many, many situations where I had to deal with cities and local agencies. Whenever it comes to this special interest group, they will try to push as much as they can to get their way. What we have to do is to stand firm, prepare our defense. It's very important, and I have done that for many, many cases. I testified before the federal court, state courts, to preserve the rights of the citizens of the state of California. It's not, I'm not just talking. I have done it, and I have the experience to do that, and thus the experience I want to bring before the city council, as a city council member, if you elected me. Thank you very much.
And finally, on this question, Dana Dilworth.
Well, I would cry foul. I am concerned that the general manager of Universal Paragon is on the board of SAM CETA and having that kind of impact, that I'm really concerned that we would zone it for housing and then have to buy it back for high-speed rail. I think that would be a total disservice to the public. And so I would defend on the legal end, rather than wait, you know, for somebody to change the rules along the way. And so that's where I stand, is that I believe we have a local rule, and if that's about to change, that we need to stand up and not make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we're going to change gears and talk about budget. Brisbane has priority-based budgeting. What item would you put on the top of the list? Brisbane has priority-based budgeting. What item would you put at the top of the list? And to start on this one, we start with Clark Conway.
Well, police and fire and public works, and followed by recreation. I mean, but safety is the most critical component. And I think police and fire and public works all work together as far as to provide safe water for public works, safe streets, of course, police, you know, safe neighborhoods, and fire, you know, in case of emergency. Actually, our fire department does more on emergency calls for health reasons than it does on fires. And that's about 80, 87%, maybe 92% to 8%. It's quite a flip-flop ratio. And so safety is the biggest thing for me.
Thank you. And next on this is Cliff Lenz.
Sure. Public safety is number one, and not just police and fire, but also public works. We depend on public works to make sure that our water is healthy, that the sewage is going out properly, that our roads are safe. You know, we decided to do a priority-based budget because, you know, we wanted to have greater accountability for how we spend money, and to be able to put together a criteria that then shows, okay, these are the reasons why spending this money is important. And then, as you go down the line for all the other things that the city spends money on, you rank them lower. Right now, we're in the good times, but there will be a recession that will come. And so we need to be able to have the list of priorities to make sure that when that does happen, we're able to fund the things that are most important for the health and well-being of the city.
Thank you. And next on this question is Jamil Munir.
I agree with what Clark and Cliff and others have said about this. The one thing that we are not doing, and we should be doing, is to take care of the maintenance of the cities that we are ignoring. There are a lot of problems with our city streets. There are a lot of problems with the infrastructures. There is also a problem with the capital improvement projects, which we seem to be delaying and delaying and delaying. At some point, it's going to bite us. And it's important that public safety is always number one. And I've been involved in safety business for the last 40 years. So of course, that will be my number-one priority. But the thing is, we need to figure out how we're going to take care of in future, which is the capital improvement projects that are sitting right in front of us. We need to work on those, and we need to prioritize those also in our priority scheme.
Thank you. And next on this question is Tony Varios.
Well, my understanding is that out of the $10 million that we have in the bank now, about $5 million of it is already earmarked for those capital projects that Jamil just mentioned. In any case, those projects will, there will be new projects continue to add to that over time, and the priority-based budget concept makes a lot of sense. Unfortunately, there is no citizen budget review committee, and there is, while there's technically transparency, if you go hunting for the information, I hope you have plenty of time looking for it, because it's not that easy to find. People's ideas of what's the top priority will not always, people will not always agree. I'm very concerned that the city hasn't provided us testing information on the quarry dust and the dust from the concrete crushing and the dirt operation, which we call Mount Brisbane. I think that's really a big mistake. I think they owe the people, and we have the money certainly to either pay for it or require the developer or the operator out there to pay for it.
Thank you. And next on this question is Karen Cunningham.
My campaign materials all cite safety as the first thing, so sorry I sound like everybody else, but that's in my campaign materials. My version of safety, first of all, in an emergency, if we had a major emergency in Brisbane, we have one police officer who lives here. We have none of our fire department who lives here, and that's kind of a travesty to me. So part of the safety thing would be winding into the affordable housing, workforce housing, is trying to get some of our safety people to live in town, as well as our roads are in really bad shape, and that is very unsafe. So I would be working on the roads as well.
Thank you. And finally, on this question is Dana Dilworth.
I consider infrastructure a really important issue in this town. We have some roads that are pretty unsafe, and, you know, one of them is the ramp coming off of, into Sierra Point. And the other issue that I think nobody else has touched upon is our general plan. I think that puts us, it's a 30-year-old, almost 30-year-old general plan, and I think that puts us at risk. We're not up to date. We haven't done the necessary studies to be able to protect the citizens in the future. And so for me, updating the general plan is a necessity. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is about traffic and parking. Many citizens feel that the police have been a little lenient about enforcing traffic and parking rules. Would you break with what the questioner considers unwritten rules and encourage our police to more proactively enforce traffic and parking? So should traffic and parking rules be enforced more rigorously in Brisbane? And for this one, we start with Jamil Munir.
I've been a traffic engineer for the last, I will say, 20 years. And when we put the signs, signals, we need to have the enforcement activity behind that, otherwise it doesn't mean anything. And a number of citizens I talk to, they always say that people don't follow the signs. They just go right through the stop sign. If that's the case, then why do we have the stop signs to begin with? So in order to have a good traffic program, we have to have the good sight distances so that people can see the stop signs, and also the enforcement. And if I get, when I get elected as a city council, my top priority will be to look at the traffic safety. And there are other ways to improve the safety of the streets, other than signs and lights. And if anybody wants to talk to me more about that, I'll be more than happy to do that. I've got tons of information on that, and that's what my business was for the last 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on this topic is Karen Cunningham.
One of my pet questions. I'd probably get a little brutal about this, but let's start at the top, and we can whittle it back if people think I'm a little too harsh on it. A $20 fine for parking where it says, "No parking for street cleaning," is abysmal to me, because the reason we're cleaning the streets is so we don't have the cigarettes and all the other junk that's in our main streets going into our waterways. It always makes me crazy to see thousands of cigarette butts, nobody's moving their cars, and the fine, if it is imposed, is only $20. So I would definitely want to enforce that. With so many people now, multi-generational family homes, and people renting out rooms in their homes, parking is definitely a nightmare. I am in favor of a permit program, which is going to upset quite a few people in town, but I don't see any other way we can do that. I would also like to see some kind of off-site parking for the additional vehicles, the boats, the RVs, and all of that kind of stuff.
Thank you. And next on this question is Tony Varios.
Well, imagination and creativity never hurt anybody. This town's got a ton of it, a lot of artists in this town, a lot of very bright people. But I haven't seen a whole lot of that applied to this subject. I have talked with the police chief, who I have a great deal of respect for, and she told me point-blank that at one point, the staff was, the staffing was down, and less citations were issued during that time, because there's not enough police to be everywhere, obviously. Now staffing is up, and she told me the tickets, the citations are dramatically up, but it's not an exact correlation because of that difference in staff. They also have a plan already in place to listen to what people tell them about where there's specific problem areas and work those areas to try to improve it. Obviously, more needs to be done. I'm thinking more police need to be hired, because you obviously can't have two cops cover this whole town, especially if they're not right in central Brisbane. That's a big deal. The parking, we have all of Valley Drive. We have a lot of options that haven't even been discussed, and it burns me up.
Thank you. And next on this topic is Dana Dilworth.
I'm a little different than most in that I have observed that if there is a parking issue, somebody will call, and that gets resolved. I don't think that our police force, that it's a good use of our police force to be dedicated to parking, and that when our planning commissioners change the rules or allow people, you know, large houses to have no parking or less parking, I think that that's the source of the issues, and it should be looked at from that direction, rather than employing police to, in my opinion, basically, you know, stage ticketing. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on this topic is Clark Conway.
Always a delicate balance when it comes to traffic in town. In town, our roads kind of make it difficult, you know, and get more cars on the street and stuff like that. And it was alluded to, that, you know, more people are renting rooms out and stuff like that. But I've seen more tickets recently than I've ever seen. But it's always a delicate balance, because when people start getting the tickets, like your neighbors and stuff like that, they come and they complain to you, and they're all pissed off, saying, "Why does the police give me a ticket? My tire was like six inches over the white line," you know? Well, I guarantee you that out on Bay Shore, they constantly are giving tickets out there. And so in town, one of the things that we can do now that the Brisbane Inn is open, especially downtown, is see if we can collaborate to utilize their parking lot. I know the city council at one point looked at maybe doing eminent domain on that to make a community parking lot, but we could work with the local businesses to do something to help alleviate that, especially on street cleaning. That would be a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, on this topic, Cliff Lenz.
So, you know, out canvassing, parking was right near the top of things that the community would like to see, you know, something happen. And so in my weekly meetings with our city manager, you know, I asked him, I said, "Well, do we have some kind of permit program in place?" And he said... And he said, "Yes, but we just haven't really initiated it." And so, you know, I thought, "Well, maybe we should do some kind of pilot program. We'll take a couple of streets and do it for several months and see if that is something that would work with the community on those streets to try and alleviate the hassles of trying to find a parking spot after coming home from work." You know, also on visitation, we have many people who are parking there that park there for a long period of time, longer than what is stated on the signs. And then because those spots aren't for the businesses, then that's spilling over into the residential. And then, of course, on San Bruno Avenue at the crest, we have some major issues there and we need to, that needs to be a top priority for the council to come up with a safe game plan for that.
Thank you. Our next question stays on the transportation theme a bit. What is your position on the new shift of airplane flight over Brisbane? The city of Phoenix sued the FAA in one. Would you support suing the FAA, depending on your position? So what is your position on the new shift of airplane flight path over Brisbane? And if appropriate, would you support suing the FAA? And starting on this one is Dana Dilworth.
Interesting. My husband teaches out at Hiller Aviation, and so he goes to the airport abatement on a regular basis. And they continue to claim that they don't go right through Brisbane, but we're sitting there with cameras, right, so that you can see the plane between our two houses. I absolutely, we should sue. We should enjoin ourselves with the Woodside and the other communities that are suing. This is, you know, keeps people awake at night. It is, can be a health hazard. You try to drive when you've had interrupted sleep. And I think that the FAA is rather cavalier and that they need to be reined in. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on this topic is Tony Varios.
Well, I've, the question was, what about the airplane situation? Has it got worse? And should we sue or not?
What, yeah. And I'm always happy to repeat the question, candidates. What is your position on the new shift of airplane flight paths over Brisbane? And would you support suing the FAA if appropriate?
Yeah, well, my position is I've been working on it with Peter Grayson and a number of other people, some of whom are in this room tonight, for over two years, close to three years now. And it got demonstrably worse. We're lucky in Brisbane that not everyone in town is impacted by it the same way as some are who can't sleep. Some cases, well, wife can sleep and a husband can't. People, people react to the noise differently, but it's demonstrably worse. It's incredibly bad most of the time. And unfortunately, it didn't get better because the FAA lies. It's been, they've been proven to lie. That's why they lost that lawsuit. I've been working since then to try to encourage everybody from Pacifica to Southern end of San Francisco and Brisbane to work together to sue in a class action with Los Angeles, San Diego, Seattle, Minneapolis, New York. I'm connected to all those people on Facebook. We're all suffering the same way, and we haven't heard back from the lawyers yet on that.
Thank you. And next on this question is Clark Conway.
Yes, I would support suing them in a class action venue, you know, join together with other cities. I wouldn't, I wouldn't sue just as Brisbane as a lone entity. I mean, Phoenix is a much larger city than Brisbane is. And, you know, we're going to have a lot of, a lot of tough battles ahead of us. So we got to be very diplomatic about the fights that we pick and choose. I know that, I know Cliff had worked hard, you know, and our citizen group worked hard in trying to get things changed with our representative in Washington, Jackie Speer, but nothing seems to happen, you know? Really, what they should be doing is flying out through the Golden Gate. But this is about economics for the airlines, and our legislatures are not protecting us. Our Congress is not protecting its citizens. They care more about the corporations than they do the citizens. And that was what I said earlier about the further they are from the people, the further they're separated from it. And that's, I can go on and on about that one.
Thank you. And next on this is Cliff Lince.
You know, the airplane noise is a quality-of-life issue. You know, I grew up in South San Francisco, and seven forty-sevens used to go over my mom's house every single day, all day, and they still do. When I came to Brisbane, it's not as bad, but it's still not good. And so that's why I decided to volunteer to represent the city on SFO Roundtable. And I became the chair, and I was the chair for three years. During that time, yeah, I mean, things aren't 100% better, but they are better in central Brisbane than what they used to be when, when I was on that board. Though, I have to say, some of that noise did shift to the ridge, and I don't think that that was fair. I've tried to, to work diplomatically with the FAA and the SFO Airport to come up with a proper way of flying the planes over the bay longer and, as Clark had said, out the Golden Gate. Unfortunately, when the Trump administration came into power, a lot of that work that the FAA, I mean, that the SFO Roundtable put forth has been placed on hold. And so we're still waiting for the results of that agreement from SFO Roundtable to have some things be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on this topic is Karen Cunningham.
Over the last eight or nine years, I've attended several meetings with the FAA and our Congresswoman, and I was absolutely appalled at the way she was treated by the FAA. I was privy to a conversation where one of the gentlemen just turned to her and said, "We report directly to the President of the United States." And so basically, there was no consideration for what we were bringing forward. They put all of these new flight paths together. We argued about it for the longest time, that it wasn't going to improve anything for Brisbane, and it has not. Sometimes it's good here in central Brisbane. Sometimes it's awful here in, in central Brisbane. Sometimes it's better up on the ridge. Sometimes it's worse. But this is all about saving a few dollars for the airlines, and I would most definitely be interested in joining in a lawsuit, as a class action lawsuit.
Thank you. And finally, on this topic, Jamil Munir.
Certainly, I will go along with suing the FAA. But before we do that, we have to figure out why this problem happened. Was there any reason, all of a sudden, we start getting too many airplanes over Brisbane? Was there any compromise was made so that some of the cities can divert their flight pattern over Brisbane? It's very important to know that because the, because if that's the case, we have to go to the root cause. And as an engineer, I like to find out what the root cause is before I just go ahead and jump into the lawsuits and start filing, filing the lawsuits against the FAA. Cities like Phoenix can afford to do that. We are a small city, so we have to work with airport authorities and other agencies together. And we want to make sure that we never compromise our position just because of our self-interest or whatever it is. We need to support our interest first, and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll wander back to Baylands. Is the threat that the decision will be taken away from Brisbane by the state or another entity a credible one? Is the threat that the decision regarding Baylands will be taken away from Brisbane by the state or other entity a credible one? And if so, what would you do? And starting on this is Clark Conway.
Yes, it's very credible. And we've already started, we're going to work with our state legislator, our representative, not the San Francisco representatives. I'll guarantee you, if the San Francisco representatives had their way, it would already been taken away right now. Because there was like 132 bills between the Senate and the House that were passed focused on housing. And the only way to say it is they're housing anal right now. It's a housing craze. Back in the nineties, it was business, "We need to build more businesses" and stuff like that. And then the dot-com bubble burst and business buildings were vacant. The one in South City stand vacant for ten years, you know? And I don't know what's going to happen. Yes, we need housing and stuff like that, but, you know, they're getting crazy about it, and San Francisco's popping off. Like I said earlier, you got 38,000 vacant units, and they don't do nothing about that. That's a pittance. That's seventeen, eighteen times larger than Brisbane itself.
Thank you. And next on this topic is Jamil Munir.
Thank you. Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Is the threat that the decision regarding Baylands, that the decision will be taken away from Brisbane by the state or another entity a credible one?
It's, it's real. It can happen. But what we have to do is stand together, united, and fight that. In my involvement with the, with the state and federal agencies, number of times, we come across those type of problems. And I will say that I have handled those things all along, including going to, before the federal court and defending that. I will definitely stand for the rights of the cities of Brisbane. The difference between me and other city council members is that I have done those things. I have an experience, and I can help the city fighting these kind of, I call that bullying or tactics. And if we stand firm on our position and united, unity is very important. If we unite together and fight, we can conquer anything. And that's my stand, that I will not let them bullying and get our rights out of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on this question is Dana Dilworth.
Well, I would try to get the best legal advice possible because it's, to me, I just kind of think of the good old days when Quentin Kopp was around and, and he was professed that he supported home rule. And he really supported Brisbane because he knew that we had different ways to govern ourselves and that we should have the right to govern ourselves. So one of the things I would consider is working with other communities that are distressed by similar laws. And, you know, I don't exactly have a list, but I think, you know, Belmont and other communities have a similar concern and that we would work together as a community to continue to have our ability to do our own legal work.
Thank you. And next on this question, whether the threat is, that the decision will be taken away from Brisbane a credible one, is Karen Cunningham.
The answer is definitively yes. We are in danger of losing control of the decision-making for the Baylands. That is a given. I spoke with one of the state legislators today and asked the question point-blank, "Would you do something to take this away from us?" The answer was categorically, "Yes, we would, and we would write a new state bill that was just pertinent to Brisbane." So the answer is, "Yes, they can take it away from us." If they take it away from us, that is currently approximately 20% of our tax base that we would lose, and we would lose all control of what would go forward. I don't think we have the money to fight that. I'm not sure what we're going to do about that. The answer was yes. And if we lose control, they could do whatever they want to do. We would get all the noise, all the dirt, all the pollution, all the crime, and anything they want to put out there. But the answer I got today was yes.
Thank you. Next on this question is Cliff Lince.
Yes, the threat is real. And, you know, one only needs to head south a couple miles to Oyster Point, South San Francisco, and look at that development. And imagine that type of dense, sterile development happening in the Baylands if we don't control the land use out there. What we need to do is come together and put forth a responsible and reasonable plan. By being at odds with each other, we are playing into the hand of UPC, politicians in San Francisco. And when I mean the politicians in San Francisco, I'm talking about the ones that are up in Sacramento that represent San Francisco. And of course, the other legislators in Sacramento that are really pushing for housing. And so, again, we need to come together and really understand what are our values. It isn't just a number that's on a sign coming into town. It's about how we come together as a community, and we can do that also for the Baylands.
Thank you. And finally, on this question is Tony Varios.
Well, this is a difficult one because the city council is privy to private conversations with the city attorney and their consultant that the rest of us have no idea of. And any state legislator, senate or assembly, can say anything they want and scare the pants out of you. That doesn't mean they're going to pass anything. Now, well, they've passed a tremendous amount of legislation already, but it specifically is targeted at land that's already zoned for housing, where many cities all over the state have gone way out of their way to stop projects and downsize projects. They're saying, "No." I'm saying you find out for sure from a top attorney like Dana suggested, and by the way, Quentin Kopp is still alive and kicking, and find out for sure where we stand and what we can do, as Jamil said, to fight it. And at the same time, if we have to make a change, we might go to Daly City and make a deal with them. They're already in Samaria County, and we might make a fine deal with them instead of worrying about all this other mess. There's creativity that we can apply.
Thank you. Our next question is, what is your position on short-term rental in Brisbane? What is your position on short-term rentals in Brisbane? And we'll start with Karen Cunningham.
The short-term rental situation does not offend me. One of our neighbors uses short-term rental on a regular basis. And quite frankly, the short-term renters who come into her place are much nicer than the long-term renters that she had that were not so nice over the many years. I, I know there is an argument from some people that it's taking full-time rental units off the market, but this particular neighbor of mine would not have her property up for full-time rental. She rents out her room when she needs a little bit of extra money. So that's not really a valid argument, in my opinion. I guess we've got the, the parking situation as ever as part of that equation, but we've got the parking issue that we need to deal with, whether it's short-term rental or long-term rental. So I am not opposed to it at all.
Thank you. And next with this question is Tony Varios.
It's not one-size-fits-all, black and white issue. And I think we have to look at these things very carefully, get the facts straight before any decisions made, so that people who are just renting occasionally and are not a big burden on their neighbors and not taking property off the market for renters who are currently suffering. I met one the other day who was paying $2,000 for a one-bedroom unit, and it's really, that's hard. We need to think about it from a holistic perspective, look at the whole thing, and see how we can increase affordable housing stock for lower-income renters. We have many in Brisbane, and I think many of them are just hanging on. They can't really handle big increases. Next thing you know, they're out.
Thank you. Next on this question is Cliff Lince.
Sure. You know, short-term rentals is something that we need to address as a city and have proper regulation. There is, it's, it's on both sides. I mean, you have the property owner who, maybe if they didn't rent out that room, wouldn't be able to stay in Brisbane. They need that extra income. Then, of course, you have the neighbors that don't like the cars, the additional cars parked on their street. And so, you know, by having some kind of regulation that provides a balance, also, you know, when people use the short-term rentals, the city doesn't receive any income from that. Whereas when they, you know, someone stays at a hotel, we get the transit-oriented tax. So I've been working with Councilmember O'Connell on trying to come up with, you know, some legislation that we can then bring to the council and, and have serious debate about it, and also get input from the community. Because really, that's where it needs to be.
Thank you. And next on this question is Dana Dilworth.
We have opened our house to hip housing to provide We have opened our house to hip housing to provide housing for people who might be in transition. And if you're speaking of, actually, the neighbor that she was, Karen was speaking of, had told me that actually they do have a transient tax, that that was worked into the agreement with the Airbnb people. One thing, though, I was a little concerned when I was just kind of searching to see what was available was that some people are considering housing in the Marina. And I actually support housing in the Marina, but I know that it's not currently a law. So I thought that it was interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on this question is Jamil Munir.
Thank you. This matter was brought before the Planning Commission twice. There were a number of people who were in favor of this and there were a number of peoples who had a lot of serious concerns regarding the safety of the neighborhood when they come in, the transients. We don't know their background. There are companies like Airbnb, they're supposed to be checking whether they have any criminal records or not. That was a major concern that was brought up before us. I know that we are going through a tough economic situation here. And it's a good cause, it's an extra source of income for people. But before we proceed with that, and I'm in favor of that, but we need to have some kind of a regulation. How are we going to regulate that so that the neighborhood is safe? And also, like Karen Cunningham brought up, that we need to worry about the parking. We're constantly struggling about the parking and with more transient people coming in, what it will do to our traffic and parking.
Thank you. And finally, Clark Conway.
I'm not sure it's healthy for the community. I mean, we're a small community and we've actually been taking a look at it. As a council, we're trying to get data from other communities that have done this. So we don't know and haven't passed any laws yet, you know, to allow it. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure it's really good for a community like Brisbane because, you know, we're so close-knit that if you start bringing in, allowing everybody to do it and all of a sudden it becomes the new fad, then nobody knows each other. And then it becomes more, to me, more of a safety issue because you don't know who's coming or going, you know? And there's been break-ins and stuff like that that happened in Brisbane, mostly around when the kids get out of school in June. For some reason, they always see the car break-ins go up. But, you know, the jury's still out with me on that. I don't know if it's healthy for our community and I would have to really weigh that out before I supported it, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, besides Baylands, what topic or need are you most passionate about that you will address at the council and why? Besides Baylands, what topic or need are you most passionate about that you will address while you're on the city council? And for this one, we start with Cliff Lenz.
Next month, the city council will be addressing the Parkside Precise Plan. So that has gone through the Planning Commission. Now will come before the council.
Stop.
Reset.
Yeah. Yeah.
You get a re-go.
All right. So, yeah, so as many, you know, know, you know, trying to bring affordable housing to Brisbane is something that I am passionate about. To me, having affordable housing, you know, allows our town to be diverse. You know, it keeps teachers and folks that work in public safety be able to live and work in the same place, especially even folks that, you know, that work in our restaurants, you know, and allowing, you know, additional housing for our seniors. And so, you know, to conform with our housing element requirements, we have moved forward with doing a zoning overlay in the warehouses across the street from the park. And we all know that having warehouses across the street from your park in the middle of your town is not the best use of that land. It really should be, you know, some housing and better restaurant and retail accommodations, you know, that make up a really smart downtown. And so I'm looking forward to working with my council colleagues on that.
Thank you. And next on this question, what, besides Bayland, what topic or need are you most passionate about that you will address in the council? Is Clark Conway.
Well, I don't know about passion, but from a need point of view, we definitely need to do Parkside because the one bill that was just passed was SB 35, which has to do with zoning. And if we don't get the zoning done on Parkside, which, you know, we've allotted to on our, what's called the Regional Needs Housing Assessment Number, that if we don't get that done by this year, then the state now has another law that they're going to hold against us. And this is, this is one that was represented by Senator Scott Weiner, who's from San Francisco and looks at Brisbane under the microscope. So that's one that we definitely have to get done this year. So that's it.
Thank you. And next on this question is Tony Varios.
Well, the first thing is I don't want to see more people get killed on the roads here because of bad design or a lack of controls. Maybe they're just bad drivers, but I think we should do everything we can possibly do to keep them alive, keep them out of accidents. And I'd also like to see us do everything we can to change the attitudes of the people who think that the laws don't apply to them, running stop signs in town because it's hearing way too much of it. And like I say, I know the chief and the police department's working on it, but they need more support. And I'd like to see, I think it's terrible that UPC has neglected the crown jewels of their property, the Brisbane Bay Shore Roundhouse, which is now on the National Historic Places Register. It's gone into deterioration to a state of demolition by neglect. And the Brisbane Lagoon is essentially ignored and it's treated like the San Francisco Dump Annex. It's not usable for any recreational activities, but it still seems to be okay for people to fish and eat the fish there. So I'm concerned about dealing with those things as well as checking our air quality.
Thank you. And next on this is Jamil Munir.
Okay. As an engineer, I look at the final results, what we're going to get out of this. Any pet projects we start with, we need to see how it will be implemented. We just don't want something that's, that looks good on the paper. And there is no way to implement that. And that happens over and over in local and state level. We are very good when it comes to coming up with the plans, but we don't have the strategy to how to do this and how to implement that. If we make it strictly voluntary, that somehow it's going to work, that's not going to work. As an engineer, I want to see first, what's the, how are we going to implement that? And my pet project will not be any of that. What I'm looking for is how to help the city and especially to revitalize the downtown. That's where there is a dire need. People don't have any place to go for a good shopping or restaurants or anything like that. So that's been neglected for a very, very long time and it's time for me to stop, so.
Thank you. And next on this is Dana Dilworth.
Well, as many people are aware that Sierra, if I could be on a committee, I would be dealing with Sierra Point. And I'm really concerned about the plans to basically dead-end the traffic pattern there, that it should remain open so that people using the waterfront can travel to those areas. And so I've been very concerned about public open space and that there are a couple of council members that are thinking that the open space is available for anybody to submit a plan on. And I think our open space is very important and that the public should be part of that decision-making plan, not to give away our land at the first request. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Karen Cunningham.
So my biggest achievable passion is attacking affordable workforce housing for everybody in Brisbane. It really is a travesty that we have none of our firefighters live here, one police officer and just a handful of our teachers. I would assume probably none of the people who work in our restaurants also live in Brisbane. There's a couple of things that are very attractive to me and obviously it's just my passion. It's not anybody else's at this point. But if you've never seen the shipping container homes and how beautiful they can be, the thought of a shipping container, if you've never seen a shipping container home, is probably like, what is she talking about? But realistically, they've done some architecturally incredible things and you can put homes together for $35,000. So I've been looking at the villages they've created with the shipping container homes as well as the villages they've created with the tiny homes. And if you're thinking that we can actually put a home together for $35,000 to $50,000, that makes sense to me.
Thank you. Our next question is, what state, sorry. What steps will you take to improve after-school care by Parks and Rec? What steps will you take to improve after-school care by Parks and Rec? And for this, we start with Jamil Munir.
This is a very, very important issue for me. First and foremost, we need to work with the school district to make sure that we support them in their activities to raise the money. We need to work on their recreation programs and after-school programs for that. We need to provide the funding for the, to make sure that the people, they have the proper system in place to bring the students from the school to their home. I'm talking about subsidizing the bus, shuttle service. And it's also, actually, the school district is independent body. But what I've worked with the school district before in the city of San Francisco, there are some things we can do as a city council. And that is to support in coming up with funding programs for them by volunteering some of the things that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on this question is Cliff Lenz.
A few years ago, I used to serve on the Brisbane School Two by Two with Councilmember Conway. In my last meeting, Clark and I were, we sat down with Bob Detmer and Ken Walker and we pitched the idea of, well, you know, we closed the teen center and we thought of doing the programs out of Litman, but it wasn't really, it wasn't really working. And we said, well, why don't we have the school district? Why don't we have the school run that after-school program? And they came up with a great game plan and that after-school program for the teens at Litman is just thriving tremendously. Now we have a situation at BES. We need to take the same approach and apply it there. And so I've been in correspondence with the superintendent, Ronan, and, you know, trying to find out what would work for that school because each school is different. But, you know, we have such a great relationship with our school district and there's no reason why we can't continue to make things better for after-school programs.
Next is Karen Cunningham.
I have a lot of young mom and dad friends here in Brisbane and I have not heard that there's a problem. So I'm not going to pretend I have a great answer for this one. But if there is a problem, I'm sure we can sort it out post-haste and make any programs that we have for our kids better. But I haven't heard that there's an issue. Obviously, there is, or this question wouldn't have been raised. But amongst the young parents that I know, I haven't heard anything. But I would suggest that we get the parents together and we resolve this really quickly. I don't think this should be something that should take too long to resolve at all if it's an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Clark Conway.
Yes, yeah, we did have a problem at the beginning of the school year. And mainly it was staff-related as we didn't have enough staff to cover. And what we found out was that we couldn't hire people because we were paying $10 an hour and all the other cities around started paying $15 an hour and stuff like that. And so the college students that were taking recreation programs then started going to other cities. They're getting $5 more an hour. Why not? You know, what would you do? So the council just recently raised the wage from $10 to $15 an hour so that we could be competitive in the market, too. So that's one of the things, is a staffing issue. Another thing is we're going to be installing this year a bathroom up at BES, you know? And as Cliff said, we're also going to be working with the school district to see if there's something that we can do there, too. But mainly right now, it's on the city. And so staffing is the issue for us and so being competitive wage should help.
Thank you. And next is Tony Varios.
Well, the staffing issue that Councilman Conway just mentioned was discussed at the last city council meeting. And I think Stuart Schlesinger had worked that over and made the points that Clark just explained to you. And we were told that the impact over the whole staff beyond the rec people was going to be something like $40,000 a year. And I figured that's not a problem. The issue and the real question is, I think some of these things, they have to come from the bottom up. The parents have to get more involved. They have to get more butts in these seats and tell people on the city council what their concerns are and not think that when they just post to residents of Brisbane or next door or Briznet, that the city council is reading all those emails and knows what is on their mind. They have to come and they have to write so that it gets on the record. When it gets on the record, then I'd like to hear, instead of a number of people have written us, I'd like to hear five people or 25 people or 50 letters came in for or against something. I don't like hearing these nebulous terms, but we can work it all out.
Thank you. And finally, Dana Dilworth.
Well, I'm a high school teacher and I see some wonderful programs that people have developed. And my thinking is that we need to find ways where we give young people experiences so that they can be making better choices in their lives. And some examples I know of are like an entrepreneurs' club or a stock market club where kids don't even have to use actual dollars, but that they start to learn about how the world operates with, you know, how we operate, young legislators' clubs, things like that. And, you know, hiking on the mountain is always my second best. So I would put together programs that are a combination of movement. I mean, kids go stir-crazy sitting around all the time. And so kids need programs where they are able to move and play. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a question about the environment. California has set ambitious greenhouse gas reduction rules, like most cities. What level of importance do you attach to action on climate change? And if elected, would you be willing to spend city funds to meet ambitious goals? For example, help pay for residential energy assessments. California has ambitious greenhouse gas reduction goals. What level of importance do you attach to action on climate change? And if elected, are you willing to spend city money towards meeting those goals? And on this, we start with Clark Conway.
Yes. I mean, it had been actually, so, I mean, it's a great question because, you know, we have been spending money on stuff like that. And actually, we took a long time to turn down a grant from CCG, City Association of Governments, City and County Association of Governments. And the reason why we turned it down is all the cities in the county were doing these action plans, climate action plans, you know, and we're all required to do it. But theirs were so unrealistic, they just threw anything that they could, that, you know, we're looking at it from a pragmatic standpoint, so we wouldn't take the money until we actually had a plan that we thought was feasible and workable. until we actually had a plan that we thought was feasible and workable. And we used our Open Space Ecology Committee to work on that plan, and the city accepted it. And ours was much more comprehensive and practical than any other city in, I know, in San Mateo County, but probably the state of California. We were also the second city in the state of California to do greenhouse ordinance, or green building ordinance, sorry.
Thank you. And next on this is Dana Dilworth.
I think it's really important, I find it interesting, that we're saying that we're actually doing it, when I think Jamil and I were screaming out loud that for something out on Sierra Point, that we really don't have the laws in place to make it happen. We've done a lot of platitudes, but I think the important thing is now to take the knowledge that we have about sustainability and turn it into law, instead of have a plan that nobody's following. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on this is Jamil Munir.
When it comes to the greenhouse gases, I've been talking about it since 1979, when I was first involved with a big task force with the University of California-Davis. And if anybody is interested to see my research program, and a research paper on that, I'll be more than happy to share with you. It's important that we consider this as a very serious problem for us, not only the greenhouses, but also particulate matters, and also the use of pesticides and other dangerous materials that we're using it. And I fully support the state of California's effort to come up with this comprehensive plan to reduce the greenhouse emissions. Unfortunately, we have the federal government right now, who is very much against that, and we have an upward battle to make sure that California still remains the leader in this. And I will really, really work hard, if I get elected, to make sure that we support California's effort.
Thank you. And next is Tony Varios.
Well, I think first thing is, most people probably are not as aware as some of the members here, like Jamil and Dana, about what are these statistics? What is the average homeowner in Brisbane really producing in terms of greenhouse gases, and what's their carbon footprint? Some individuals know, because they're working their smartphone with a new application, they may crank it out in a second or two. But I think you'd find that a lot of people don't have a clue. They leave every light on in the house, day and night. I see them up at the ridge, my neighbors, all the time. So I'd like to see us do everything we can possibly do that's realistic, and at the same time, I want to make sure we're not wasting our money just shuffling paper without actually getting any benefit.
And next on this is Karen Cunningham.
Thank you. This was actually part of my closing statement, so I'll use it right here. You know, we're a small enough city that we can probably put ourselves out there for all kinds of pilot programs. You know, the technology is coming at us hard and fast. We'd be a great, we'd be a great city to try the driverless solar-powered shuttles. There are a lot of different companies that have them out. I'm very passionate about that, as is somebody else on the planning commission with me. That would go a long way to reducing our carbon footprint, because we drive everywhere. We have no choice. If we had better transportation, it's really nice to say we're going to get everybody out of their cars and into public transportation. But until the public transportation in Brisbane is adequate, that's not going to happen. So we have to think of other ways to do that. And for me, the driverless shuttles is a really great place to start. It's really far along in development. There is pilot cities all over the world, including several cities in the United States that are successfully using these shuttles, and I want one here, too.
Thank you. And finally Cliff Lenz.
Sure. You know, global warming is the most significant challenge facing humanity. We, as a city, have been a leader in sustainability. And so I believe that the Baylands development should be a zero-carbon development, that it should be energy self-sufficient. That means creating its own green energy on an annual basis, reducing vehicle miles traveled, which means that we need to create a very efficient and user-friendly public transportation system. The city has invested putting solar panels on City Hall. I think that we should make all of the public buildings that we own to be green buildings. And if there are ways that we can get funding from certain sources that make it easy, or easier for our homeowners to build, or to install solar panels, we need to work with our community in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have time for one last question, maybe one more. So we're just going to start to wrap here. But on this question, public trust, integrity, leadership are big issues currently in politics. What leadership qualities do you bring to the council, and how do you demonstrate transparency, integrity, and public trust? Leadership, transparency, integrity, and public trust. How do you demonstrate those? And with this, we start with Dana Dilworth.
Public trust, my theme. Transparency is being open, being, having open meetings, inviting the public. And the part about leadership is to make the effort to set these things up and connect with other people. And I, you know, it's funny, because I am the public trust person. I'm always the person who says, have you considered the public when certain deals are coming down the road? And so that's the kind of transparency I want to see, is that somebody from the public is involved in these meetings where there are, thank you, that's the end of my statement.
Thank you. And next is Tony Varios.
Well, I'm very concerned about the fact that we have major issues like Measure D and E on the ballot in November, and there was next to no public input on those. We don't know what the process was to figure out how much to raise these taxes, and why the fees on the dump trucks at the dirt Brisbane, Mount Brisbane. Why are we changing from a fee per truck to a gross sales tax basis? We know that probably everybody's going to vote for them, because it's more taxes. Good, more money, we'll vote for it. So they're not taxing us, we're taxing them. But I don't think that's a smart way to go about it. I think if you want transparency, you have to open this process up. There's no reason not have it in this room, have it on video, and have people see here what's going on, and what are the statistics, and is this really a smart move, or are you shorting the city by $100,000, or half a million, or more? Whether it's ecology, nothing against them at all, I like to encourage working with them. But if you're cutting a deal that's too sweet for them, they're going to just smile and say thank you.
And next is Clark Conway.
Yeah. Well, leadership is influence, and you've got to know how to count to three on any decision. So those are basic things, and how to initiate stuff. But when it comes to public trust, you know, Brisbane is the only city in the county of San Mateo that allows people five minutes to speak on any given subject, and a lot of times, we let them run over. Most cities are two minutes, and they cut them off right there. There's two other cities that do three minutes. It's a delicate balance, because it's a double-edged sword sometimes, because we do so much process on stuff that it comes back and bites us, you know? Like, if we had approved the Baylands, something out there three or four years ago, it'd have been done. We wouldn't have to worry about the state. But because we do the process and go through things properly, as we've done with everything, that, you know, Brisbane really has been a leader out there on doing it. So, got to stop.
Thank you. And next is Cliff Lenz.
You know, I've been a public servant that likes to engage. I like to be active and proactive, and, you know, I just don't come to council meetings, give an opinion, and leave. You know, you see me around town, I, you know, take phone calls, I reply to emails. You know, because you have concerns. You want to make the town better, I want to make the town better, and by working together, that is, to me, is what this job is all about. You know, in regards to transparency, I'm going to tell you how I feel. And that might not sit well with you on uncertain subjects, but at least you know where I stand. And, you know, for me, I always put my community first, and I listen, and there will be times when we might disagree, and there'll be other times where you'll present something to me that makes me change my mind, because it's the right thing to do. And so, thank you.
Thank you. And next is Karen Cunningham.
So, yes, we do have meetings where people can speak for long periods of time. I think that was done with the best of intentions, to be as transparent and open, and get everybody as involved as possible. Moving forward, should we continue with that five-minute rule? I'm not so sure, because it does tend to drag things back. But it does give people the opportunity to say whatever they want to say, and I guess our community really does like that. As far as transparency for, I mean, the question's kind of like four questions in one, but as far as transparency of people doing business with us, I do think that every transaction is available to the public. I'm not sure that we have anything that's secret. I think everything that is brought up at every meeting is public record, so I'm not really quite sure what that part of the question was about. But I think we should continue to encourage input. We should continue to encourage lots of people to give input at every meeting.
Thank you. And finally Jamil Munir.
Okay. When it comes to the leadership, I can challenge anyone here. My involvement in handling with very difficult issues, and working on a number of committees where I was the chairperson. When it comes to the transportation system, I was a member of the Intelligent Transportation Committee with Transportation Systems Center in Cambridge. And by the way, the driverless shuttle system is not as simple as we led to believe. There are a number of issues that need to be addressed. So when it comes to the leadership, I work with the Bay Area Fire Liaison Committee, I was the chairperson of that, working on the BART projects, fire safety and all that. And when it comes to the transparency, being a state employee for almost 30 years, that's a prerequisite. When you're working for any state agencies, you have to be transparent. And working with people on 10,000 railroad crossings, it was not easy. But I had to do it. I had to be transparent.
Thank you. And that was our last question, so that we can adjourn on time. We'll do the closing statements, which will be two minutes each, and we will reverse the order from the opening statements. And while the candidates are gathering themselves, I will remind everybody that you can find additional information about the candidates on the League of Women Voters Smart Voter site, votersedge.org, and all the candidates have been invited to enter their information and link back to their own websites. So with that, we will start with the closing statements, and the first is Dana Dilworth.
Thank you. My business sense gives me attention to detail, persistence, budgeting, and long-range planning skills. As a teacher, I possess and teach patience, critical thinking, and finding creative solutions. And as a resident and parent, I am protective of our quality of life. I bring these qualities to the table to be part of a team working for solutions for the betterment of Brisbane, and I would appreciate and ask for your vote on November 7. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Jamil Munir.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming, and it has been an honor to be here and to speak before you tonight. Again, I'm a good candidate choice for the city council because of my experience in engineering, construction, and 40 years in the state and federal regulatory environment. I'm a great candidate for the city council because I'm a hard worker, and I like to work. I'm retired now, but I would love to go back to work for the city of Brisbane and its wonderful people. I promise to be honest, transparent, and hardworking for the people of Brisbane. My engineering and regulatory experience will serve Brisbane well. I promise that Jamil knows who he works for, and that's you. I will never forget that city works for the people, not the other way around. I'll go to work on the very first day I'm elected to help manage health and safety issues, deferred maintenance, and capital improvement projects. I will stand up to the bureaucrats and outside influence who would deprive us of our right to self-determination. I will stand up to San Francisco if they try to annex us, and I will stand up to San Francisco and its airport if they don't reduce their flights over Brisbane. I will stand up to the soil processing business on the Baylands. Although potentially lucrative, it's arguably out of control. It's the type of business which can have significant adverse impacts on the environment with the harmful particulate matter it generates and the views it is blocking. Enough is enough, something has to be done, and we can't wait indefinitely until the developers' housing project is approved. I'm an engineer, please believe me, I'm telling the truth. No housing should be allowed on Baylands unless and until we have adequate comprehensive analysis to satisfy the following missing criteria or data gaps. We need complete liquefaction in seismic safety studies, complete toxic substance control action plan, complete implementation of traffic mitigation measures, non-speculative water supply agreement, and complete financial and social impact information. Thank you. I have more to say, but if anybody is interested in my closing statements, it's available here. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Clark Conway.
Thank you. I want to talk a little bit about my background, actually. I actually have a scientific and engineering background. And I worked down in Silicon Valley for 30-plus years, and I want to talk about something that was called chlorinated solvents, which out there in the Baylands is a lot of chlorinated solvents. And I've dealt with these chemicals. And this company I worked for back in, opened up a plant back in the late '70s, a state-of-the-art plant. They installed a solvent tank that held TCE, trichloroethylene, TCA, trichloroethane, DCE, dicloroethylene, and xylene, and all these things that, you know, we have out of the Baylands, but much less, because, so they put in a state-of-the-art tank that was in a concrete vault that had a membrane. And everything leaked. They didn't find out that it leaked until the neighborhood started cropping up all these weird illnesses. And these illnesses were high levels of birth defects, such as heart birth defects, web fingers, a high incidence of Down syndrome, childhood cancer. And then they went back and found something's going on, found that these tanks leaked at this company. Scientifically, they couldn't prove that these solvents caused all these problems. But it turned out that all the neighbors sued this company, and they were only in operation for four and a half years. This stuff out here was dumped, dumped, no tanks, anything like that, into the soils and stuff like that, for over 50 years. And this stuff's going to be left in place. So I have a question for you, because I know the answer for me, is would you want your children or grandchildren living out there, knowing that this stuff isn't going to be removed? That's a question. Einstein said 1930, dressing Caltech, and I'm going to finish this sentence, "Science is often inclined to do more harm than good." Not intentionally.
Thank you. And next is Tony Varios.
Well, following up on that cheerful note, unfortunately, I've got over 44 years or more, I forget, I'm losing track of it now, I started when I was 18 in the insurance business, and learning from all my customers about risk and risk management, studying all the time, learning every day, much like Jamil and Clark, although I don't have those engineering degrees. I've also got some nail-pounding experience, although I don't have a general contractor's license. I've done lots of things in my 64-plus years. One of the things that's very clear is, people don't like to talk about scary things and face reality, whether it's sea level rise, earthquakes, tornadoes, floods, you name it. If it's a natural disaster, they don't want to think about it happening to them. And of course, it doesn't happen to us every day, but we've seen a lot of it in the news- to us every day. But we've seen a lot of it in the news lately, and it's really terrible for those people who are impacted. And it can come here, and it can visit us at home, and we haven't done a damn thing about it. So I think that the toughest problems to face and deal with are the ones that we don't want to have to ever face. They're very difficult, very expensive, very problematic. And I think we need to think about those things very, very hard. You know, we put a man on the moon. I'm sure we could build on the Baylands if we feel like it. And I'm sure that we shouldn't allow it unless we're really damn sure that it's not going to make people ill.
Thank you. And finally Cliff Lenz.
Sure. You know, I want to thank the League of Women Voters in the chamber for putting on tonight.
Yes. You're fine. Wait. You get to go last. Sorry. I do this once a forum. Did I miss this?
Want me to keep going?
No, why don't you wait because of how we.
I'm like, I'm here, too.
I know. And I apologize for that.
Not a problem.
Karen Cunningham.
Okay. So our country has enough nonsense going on all around us. How about we here in Brisbane makes sense of our decisions and our actions for our future? This should always be about what we can do, what positive things we can create. We have exciting options to create spaces and places that are pleasing to us and safely serve our needs and desires. We must manage change, or change is going to go on around us unmanaged, including the toxic dump. We are the decision makers of our future. We need proven leaders to guide us to the next stages in the progress of Brisbane. But disagreement is also dear to me, too, because it is the most vital ingredient any decent society has. And we will have to agree to disagree moving forward from time to time. And that's okay, because the outcome is going to be that it creates more all-important outcomes to Brisbane. We have to agree to disagree sometimes. Something amusing to me, as I've been going around door to door, I need to share this with you, is that I've heard from certain people that they know what I think. But if it's not in my candidate statement, and I didn't tell you, it's not what I think. So if somebody tells you that they know what I think, please come and ask me. In closing, I've proven that I can work across lines with local and state politicians and all of our community. It is imperative that we all work together for the betterment of our future. If elected, I promise to serve and listen to all opinions in Brisbane, because together we can create a vision for our future that is strong and positive. It takes a village to raise a child, and it takes our children to be our guides for their future. Thank you.
My apologies and thank you. And finally Cliff Lenz.
All right. Now, I will thank the League of Women Voters in the chamber for putting on today's, or tonight's forum. But I also want to thank the people who came here tonight and provided the intelligent questions. You challenged us and not only, you know, informed yourselves, but the folks that are watching on TV. You know, this election really comes down to who you feel you can trust to represent Brisbane's best interests in dealing with UPC and the legislators in Sacramento in deciding the fate of the Baylands. You know, my top priority is to maintain local control. You know, I'm running for reelection because I want to work with all of you to make sure that whatever happens out in the Baylands represents our vision of what we want to see. Giving up the Baylands would be a detriment to us financially and a quality of life. Currently, we make between five and six million, or between four and five million dollars a year from the uses out at the Baylands currently. If we lost that, we would have to make drastic cuts in the services that we provide today: public safety, park and rec, capital improvement projects. Also, in regards to quality of life, if we weren't controlling the land uses, and San Francisco or Daly City was, you know that there would be way more housing units than what UPC's ridiculous amount is proposing right now. We also know that the density of the development would be on steroids. And we cannot do that. You know, would San Francisco or Daly City, you know, have an energy self-sufficient development? Would they care about open space? I mean, our general plan is talking about a minimum of 25%. But we know that we can do better than that. You know, you look at open space, it, so my time is up. Though, I say, I really appreciate the questions that you have. And if you want to continue the conversation afterwards, I'd love to continue to talk with you. Thank you.
Thank you all, too. Thank you for coming.
Political organization, and membership is open to both men and women of voting age. If you are interested in helping your community with forums such as these or other political engagement, brochures are in the back of the room with more information about the League. Remember to vote on Tuesday, November 7, and encourage your others to vote as well. And in conclusion, please join me. And it's a very brave thing to put yourself out there as a candidate. So thank them for running. And thank you all for being here.